We are going to get started. This is a staff, no, this is our regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, January 23rd, 2025. Before we get started, why don't we introduce ourselves on the dais?
Hi, Teresa Gilia.
Leslie Herbie, clerk to the board.
Stephanie Summerau-Dumas, Commissioner.
Oh, County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Patrick Dressing, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
Commissioner Denise Treehouse. All right, we start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments for you? Okay, I don't have any cards, so we will move into comments and motions of the Commissioners. Commissioner Summerau-Dumas.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of things. I was on a webinar yesterday. It's onboarding first session for A1 Leadership Academy. It's a six-week course, and I'm gonna, it was our intro, so it will be starting next week. And also had a meeting with Holly as it relates to the impervious surface fee and where we want to go with that, and update on where we are now. And that's about it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. Had a chance to participate in the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Served as the keynote speaker at Quinn Chapel AME, and I want to thank Reverend Colvin and the entire congregation there for inviting me. Also attended the Dr. Martin Luther King March, as well as the event at Music Hall. I want to say it was very cold, and it had a really good turnout to be so cold. And so I want to thank everybody that showed up. And we've been doing it for 50 years in Cincinnati, even though I think it's 41 years that it's been a national holiday. So it's a 50-year celebration. I also want to recognize the Prince Hall Masonic family, the Shriners and daughters that have been serving as ushers for 50 years. So they, they were very pleased. A lot of them that were around at the beginning came back, and so we really appreciate that. In addition, I had a very good meeting with our new prosecutor, Connie Pillage. So excited. They're onboarding and moving forward. So we had a great meeting there. And then also wanted to remind people Sundance starts today. And so I know that at some point, not too long from now, they'll be making some decisions. And I had a good interview with Channel 5 about what it means to us. And let me just say, it comes full circle for us because, Commissioner Treehouse, you probably remember the legislature, the issues of film industry. And the film industry used to be an underground group of businesses, small businesses, creatives throughout, throughout Ohio. And I got a chance, Ohio had its first-ever Ohio Film Office. And I was the deputy director of tourism, and they said, we need somebody to also run the film office. And so I got a chance as the interim director of the first Ohio Film Office. And I learned about a lot of folks that throughout the state. But that group is no longer underground group. They were able to organize, and we have, we were great to have Film Cincinnati and Kristin has done a fabulous job. When she first came on board, she had to build it kind of from the bottom up, and, and then bring the other part of the state together. So we went from film office to then having to, the legislatures passed tax credits, and they weren't sure at the time. And then I remember my, my first major job was to write the rules for the tax credits. And they told me Denzel Washington was getting ready to have a film. And I said, wait a minute, Denzel's in town? I'll work overtime to get these tax credits going. But we've seen the tax credits and the film industry and the economic development and all the major films that have come here. So now we're going full circle with being a major competitor to get Sundance. And what that would mean for us was that would be the distributors, because when you make a film, you want to, how do you get it distributed? And so all the distributors from all over the globe would be right here in our city and in our county, and we wouldn't have to go try to find it. And then it would create, I think, a permanency, because it would be something that's not just a one-time thing. It would be over and over. And we kind of put a stake in the ground, saying that Cincinnati Hamilton County, we're the place for creatives, for filmmakers. We're the place to come. And then people say, well, maybe I need to move there. It's less expensive to do a movie here than to run to Hollywood and do a movie. And so now more films will be created here because we got the distribution folks coming here. And then we've got the younger generation through the college market coming up. We are in a society now, even more than then, of creatives. Everybody is a creator. They want to create content. There's a need for content. And so I just think it would be, of course, having the film festival, that's great, but I think it would create a culture and a permanency and an identity that Cincinnati Hamilton County is the place for creatives, for writers, for filmmakers, distributors. And I just think it will have a lasting effect. So wanted to say good luck to Kristin and Film Cincinnati and the team that's going to be in, at the Sundance Festival, and looking forward to positivity. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of things. I represented the Commission at the Cincinnati State Small Business Cohort kickoff at Cincinnati State last week. Jobs Ohio was there in partnership with Cincinnati State, as was Alloy, represented by Greg Forte. And so we were talking to these entrepreneurs, the small business owners, about resources that were available to them to help launch their businesses and support their businesses. And I was delighted that Greg was there. And, you know, he, we singled him out and made him stand up and said, this is the guy in Hamilton County that's moving this work forward. So was really glad to make that connection for people. I also had the privilege of offering a proclamation on behalf of all three of us at the New Vision United Methodist Church on Sunday. This was a proclamation for Helen Rankin Merit. Helen Rankin, at the time, was the first African-American woman to serve in the Ohio House. And this was back in the 1970s. Now, some of us served in the Ohio House, and it's challenging for women in particular, because we are in the minority in the State House. But to be a black woman in the 70s, I can imagine some of the challenges. And she shared some stories with the congregation. So I offered this proclamation. We proclaim the day for Helen Rankin Merit. And it was a real pleasure to see her again and to connect. It was quite the celebration for her. Also opened up the Deflection Conference yesterday morning. This is a conference where people from all over the world, where it's an international conference now, because we had folks there from Canada and then other parts of the United States, learning about the deflection efforts here in Hamilton County, primarily around the quick response teams that we have all supported, both financially and in spirit, to make sure that people in this community get into treatment and long-term recovery. And so Megan Gosney, who's the Director of the Office of Addiction Response, was very influential in getting that conference here. And it's been here the last three years. And so big kudos to her and Tom Fallon and Dan Malloy and Mike Davenport and Abby Fritsch and all the people that have been cooperating in this county for many years to make sure that we, we support the quick response teams, because we know it's a strategy that works for people that suffer from addiction. And then lastly, I was going to mention some of the events for Martin Luther King Day. There were many events. I just want to thank the organizers. As you say, these are ongoing events. They've been in place for 50 years in some cases. And there are volunteers organizing all of the events throughout the county. And they're at the Freedom Center, and they're at the Church of the Resurrection. They're down on Fountain Square. They're at Music Hall. But it really is quite the effort. And I just want to thank those that continuously volunteer to organize these events so that we are reminded about the day and that reminded about the reason we have the day off and the school kids are running around. And, you know, I think sometimes we miss the reason for the season. And in this case, in Cincinnati, we are constantly reminded to pause, take some time, and recognize the benefit of living in a society where Martin Luther King Jr. led in so many things related to civil rights and to the benefit of people that live here. So want to thank those organizers. And so that's all I have. Administrator Aludo?
Miss, there's no comments or by leaves today.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Dumas has another by.
I just had one additional comment. In general, homelessness is going up. If you read the statistics and the research, not only in this area, but, but everywhere. And specifically, I was looking at the news, and Mount healthy children, and the quote was, and I'm going to get the article, make sure I have the exact number, 9% of Mount healthy children that are going to school and live there are homeless. And so I immediately said, Jeff, what can we do? They have not reached out to us, as far as I know. Can we reach out to them and see what are their needs? What are they doing? Maybe they have it under control. But that's, to think about our young children homeless in cars or whatever, and also trying to get their education is just unacceptable. So I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. All right, we do have a public hearing. And so we're going to get started with that. It is related to sidewalks. Eric Beck, our county engineer, is going to walk us through the public hearing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is a public hearing for the sidewalk repair replacement program for this year. Our estimated cost is $98,200.
overtime to get these tax credits going. But we've seen the tax credits and the film industry and the economic development and all the major films that have come here. So now we're going full circle with being a major competitor to get Sundance. And what that would mean for us was that would be the distributors, because when you make a film, you want to, how do you get it distributed? And so all the distributors from all over the globe would be right here in our city and in our county, and we wouldn't have to go try to find it. And then it would create, I think, a permanency, because it would be something that's not just a one-time thing. It would be over and over. And we kind of put a stake in the ground, saying that Cincinnati-Hamilton County, we're the place for creatives, for filmmakers. We're the place to come. And then people say, well, maybe I need to move there. It's less expensive to do a movie here than to run to Hollywood and do a movie. And so now more films will be created here because we got the distribution folks coming here. And then we've got the younger generation through the college market coming up. We are in a society now, even more than then, of creatives. Everybody is a creator. They want to create content. There's a need for content. And so I just think it would be, of course, having the film festival, that's great. But I think it would create a culture and a permanency and an identity that Cincinnati-Hamilton County is the place for creatives, for writers, for filmmakers, distributors. And I just think it will have a lasting effect. So wanted to say good luck to Krista and Film Cincinnati, and the team that's going to be in, at the Sundance Festival, and looking forward to positivity. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of things. I represented the commission at the Cincinnati State Small Business Cohort kickoff at Cincinnati State last week. Jobs Ohio was there in partnership with Cincinnati State, as was Alloy, represented by Greg Forte. And so we were talking to these entrepreneurs, the small business owners, about resources that were available to them to help launch their businesses and support their businesses. And I was delighted that Greg was there. And, you know, we singled him out and made him stand up and said, this is the guy in Hamilton County that's moving this work forward. So was really glad to make that connection for people. I also had the privilege of offering a proclamation on behalf of all three of us at the New Vision United Methodist Church on Sunday. This was a proclamation for Helen Rankin Merritt. Helen Rankin, at the time, was the first African-American woman to serve in the Ohio House. And this was back in the 1970s. Now, some of us served in the Ohio House, and it's challenging for women in particular, because we are in the minority in the State House. But to be a black woman in the 70s, I can imagine some of the challenges. And she shared some stories with the congregation. So I offered this proclamation. We proclaimed the day for Helen Rankin Merritt, and it was a real pleasure to see her again and to connect. It was quite the celebration for her. Also opened up the deflection conference yesterday morning. This is a conference where people from all over the world, where it's an international conference now, because we had folks there from Canada and then other parts of the United States, learning about the deflection efforts here in Hamilton County, primarily around the quick response teams that we have all supported, both financially and in spirit, to make sure that people in this community get into treatment and long-term recovery. And so Megan Gosney, who's the director of the Office of Addiction Response, was very influential in getting that conference here. And it's been here the last three years. And so big kudos to her and Tom Fallon and Dan Malloy and Mike Davenport and Abby Fritsch and all the people that have been cooperating in this county for many years to make sure that we support the quick response teams, because we know it's a strategy that works for people that suffer from addiction. And then lastly, I was going to mention some of the events for Martin Luther King Day. There were many events. I just want to thank the organizers. As you say, these are ongoing events. They've been in place for 50 years in some cases. And there are volunteers organizing all of the events throughout the county, and they're at the Freedom Center, and they're at the Church of the Resurrection. They're down on Fountain Square. They're at Music Hall. But it really is quite the effort. And I just want to thank those that continuously volunteer to organize these events so that we are reminded about the day and that reminded about the reason we have the day off and the school kids are running around. And, you know, I think sometimes we miss the reason for the season. And in this case, in Cincinnati, we are constantly reminded to pause, take some time, and recognize the benefit of living in a society where Martin Luther King Jr. led in so many things related to civil rights and to the benefit of people that live here. So want to thank those organizers. And so that's all I have. Administrator Eludo?
Commissioners, no comments or by leaves today.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner DuM has another.
I just had one additional comment. In general, homelessness is going up, if you read the statistics and the research, not only in this area, but everywhere. And specifically, I was looking at the news, and Mount healthy children, and the quote was, and I'm going to get the article, make sure I have the exact number, 9% of Mount healthy children that are going to school and live there are homeless. And so I immediately said, Jeff, what can we do? They have not reached out to us, as far as I know. Can we reach out to them and see what are their needs? What are they doing? Maybe they have it under control. But that's, to think about our young children homeless in cars or whatever, and also trying to get their education is just unacceptable. So I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. All right, we do have a public hearing. And so we're going to get started with that. It is related to sidewalks. Eric Beck, our county engineer, is going to walk us through the public hearing.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is a public hearing for the sidewalk repair replacement program for this year. Our estimated cost is $98,238. The initial cost will be paid out of Road and Bridge Fund. This is reimbursed then by the adjacent property owners, both, some of these townships. Anderson, I know in particular, will be paying for the ones in Anderson Township. The other properties will be paid by the frontage owner. The purpose of this hearing, letters have gone, just I'll step back. Letters went out in September and October of 2024 notifying the property owners of the inspection and what needed to be repaired. On January 10 of this year, letters were sent to all the property owners notifying them of the two public hearings, today's and the one in February. Today's hearing is the first of the two required, and it provides the affected property owners the opportunity to address commissioners regarding the repairs and the assessments that will be made to them should they not pay it. I don't believe there's anyone here to speak, but.
Let me just broadcast that. Is there anyone here to speak related to the sidewalk hearing? We see none.
I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Can I ask you, have you gotten any written responses to the letters that were sent out?
I will let Greg Flammer answer that. He manages the program.
No, we haven't gotten anything written. I've talked to a few property owners that have any questions. I usually try and answer their questions before we have these formal hearings. So it's rare that we get anything in writing. It's usually just property owners reaching out to me to get any information they might need. So the public hearings are just what we have to do by law, since we're assessing them, their property. So to answer your question, no.
Okay, but they're made aware of the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer DuM?
No questions.
Commissioner Reese?
No questions.
Okay. In that case, tell us what our next steps are.
We'll close this public hearing, and then we'll have another one in February.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to close the sidewalk hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse? Yes. Commissioner Summer DuM?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric, you might not want to go too far, because we're going to move to the regular agenda. And the first item is the county engineers.
Very well. Item number one is a resolution authorizing a consultant agreement with Dalian Pride, government affairs consultant. The work that she does is she goes out and evaluates license plate registrations to make sure they're charged to the correct jurisdiction, that we get the tax money for license plates that are registered within Hamilton County. This contract will be effective January of this year through December of 2026. The maximum amount of the agreement is $40,000. It's paid funded by the Road and Bridge Fund. Typically, in most years, we get about $110,000, $120,000 return on this investment that we make with this consultant that gets the vehicles taxed in the right jurisdiction.
All right. Commissioner DuM, any questions?
Just Ms. Pride, her name has come up every year. So how do you look at other consultants to do this?
I'm not sure how many there are that do this. She does this for several county engineers' offices. That's how we started working with her. I'm not aware of anybody else that does this work. We have just continued with her.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I have.
Commissioner Reese?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you, Eric. I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda item number one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer DuM?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Jeff, I'm going to turn this to you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Consent agenda, item two is the actions of the administration for December of 2024. Item number three is legislating the lodging tax budget for 2025 in the amount of $24.47 million for the encompass of the entirety of the lodging tax model. Item four is bid awards and contracts authorized by the purchasing department for December of '24 in the amount of $610,576. Item five is a resolution accepting purchase orders of the county. This is an amount of $11.576 million. Item number six is a resolution to adopt a personnel policy relating to the Pregnant Workers Protection Act, I believe. It's not written on the actual agenda item here, but let me get the exact name of that.
Can I, I'm going to help you here, because I've got it in front of me. It's the resolution to adopt a personnel policy to provide reasonable accommodations for employees affected by pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical conditions for inclusion in the policy manual.
It is the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act. I was thinking protection. Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, and this adjusts our personnel policy for the county to be compliant with that, with that federal law. Item seven is a resolution approving and journalizing a collective bargaining agreement between the Board of County Commissioners, the sheriff, and the sheriff's office enforcement captains. Item number eight is the reporting of no objection to two liquor permit applications by the county sheriff. The recommendation is to receive this for the record. And that is your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Summer DuM, any questions or comments?
Thank you. Just one comment. In compliance to item six, as it relates to the pregnancy requirement, there is a lactation room located on the fifth floor of the Hamilton County Building. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you. Item number three is the, I had a question about the $24.5 million in hotel lodging tax budget. And just reading this part of it, it says budget adjustment number four, and it has economic development supplemental appropriation. And I do just have a few questions. One, the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, which is funded by restricted funds, no local property taxes, no local taxes. And if you look at the Cincinnati Music Festival, bringing $107 million in economic impact, and one year brought $9 million in. And so we're taking a small portion that goes back into keeping that Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame going. But I don't see it on the list. I see receipts from Hotel Motel. I see auditing accounting services at $15,000. I see other insurance, which I'd like to know what insurance are we having to pay for at $15,000. I see other rent. I don't know what rent we're paying at $130,000. We got a payment to UC, other jurisdictions, $132,900. I don't know if that's what that is. And then it has contractual services, $10,000. Community investment, you have a total, then you have the total, $24 million. So one, I want to know about the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Should that have been in here? And then second, I'd like to find out, you know, what are we doing in terms of what insurance at $15,000, what rent are we paying at $130,000? So I don't know if I'm reading it correctly.
So I'll let John hit some of this. I'm gathering that the Walk of Fame probably is not listed here because it's a residual.
It's actually, well, it is a residual, but it's included among the community investments.
So it's lumped in with community investments then, which would also include a lot of other things that are paid out of the model. It's just not.
All the community projects that are supported.
Got it.
Lodging tax, including the Black Music Walk of Fame.
Okay. I'd like it pulled out, because I'd like to see what other community, because Walk of Fame is not getting $24 million. The 24 is the total amount, because you have on here, you got receipts for $23,230,000. Then is the total amount we're putting in the community 24 million? Or is it in addition to the 23 million? These other, these other items are not taken out of the 24 million? Is that, am I reading that right or wrong?
Well, the 23 is the revenue coming in, the 24 is the expenses going out. And the reason the second is higher is that our contribution, one of them, off the top of my head, our contribution to Sharonville comes out of the prior year's collections. So it's a little higher in expenses than what we're seeing in collections.
Yeah, I just wanted to see if these others are listed. I just, for me, it'd be
The other.
These other things, rent, what rent is $130,000?
The rent is the ground lease on the Millennium site, on some parcel adjacent to the Millennium site.
Does that come out of the bonds, or is that in addition?
It comes out of lodging tax balance.
Right. But is that like a bond payment? We did $52 million in bonds.
No, this is not bonds. Jeff, you might be able to.
It is just an expense, as that property was, as all those parcels were acquired. One of the parcels is actually, that was acquired, was a ground lease. So there are payments associated with that ground lease that we are going to be looking at, whether it makes sense to use bond proceeds to buy that ground lease in perpetuity. Right now, there is a rent payment on it. So right now, it is just coming out of the lodging tax itself. But it could be subject to a bond proceed expenditure at another time.
Okay. Who are we paying the rent to?
It's a number of individuals. These are leases that go back to the 1960s, I believe.
Okay, so they own the land.
There's a, there's a small parcel. We bought it, but we bought it subject to that ground lease at this point. So.
It's a very odd arrangement.
Yeah.
That is odd. Okay. And then we got UC, $132,900.
The key in that line item is the other jurisdictions. Those are the amounts of lodging tax that are required to be paid to jurisdictions that don't have their own lodging tax. So these are payments out to, I know, for example, Merrimont doesn't have a lodging tax. Okiya Revised Code requires us to give them a split of our collections. So that's those payments out to those jurisdictions.
Could we pull that out so we could see that, you know, this is what the other, because you have a lump sum, and then you've got UC. So how much is UC and what is it?
UC doesn't get anything. That's just what the line item is called. It's just what the auditor's office calls that line item within our chart of accounts.
Well, that's strange. It's a payment to University of Cincinnati, and they're not getting a payment.
That's right. It's University of Cincinnati and other jurisdictions is the line item as a whole.
We may want to talk about that, because, you know, if someone just saw this, they would think, just like I'm thinking, like, what are we doing? And then I'd like to know the other jurisdictions, like, what are they getting? So if we run into
Sure.
these other jurisdictions, I think.
I think in the past, we've provided some reports, and this goes back years and years and years. But we've given the board a report on what other jurisdictions get a cut of the lodging tax. But it's been maybe a decade since we've done that, so we can refresh that for the board.
Okay, thank you. Now, it says insurance, $15,000. What insurance?
Liability insurance for our convention facilities authority.
Okay, so we, we pay, okay, I got you. That's the insurance for the, both the.
The folks that serve on the board of the convention facilities authority.
I think those were my, oh, contractual services at $10,000.
You know, we budget about $10,000 in there annually if we need to use bond counsel or our financial advisor for anything related to the lodging tax.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the clarity. But I think if we could break some of it down, just to make sure that, at least for me, when I'm voting, I know.
Sure.
I don't want to run into UC and say, hey, wait a minute, we gave you $132,000. They said, what are you talking about?
When we, when we get the board to report on the other jurisdictions, we can also provide a breakdown of the community investment dollars as well, that is under that entire lump of the 24 million.
Because I know they're doing an economic study. Where does that money come from? Doing one on the banks? Is that coming out of this?
There is not a lodging tax expense.
That's somewhere else. Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks.
A comment about John. Just in general, when I see larger numbers like that, I normally email you ahead, and I ask you, what's this for? What's that? And you always respond back very quickly to me. So sometimes it's helpful, for sure, when you have such a large number, for me, to call you or to write you ahead to get a clarification on that. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Madam, madam commissioner. When we're voting, we're voting for the public, and this is a public document. So even though I want the people to know what we're voting on, and I think you gave us some great clarification. So thank you. And I'll continue to do that, to allow everyone to know what we're voting on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a question about item number six, which is the reasonable accommodations for those who are pregnant, childbirth, related medical conditions. And so this is a federal law that we are putting into our policy document, which I think is incredibly important. I would love to get an inventory, and Commissioner Summer DuM alluded to this, as to, we have a number of county buildings. It's not just this building, but rather a portfolio of buildings. I'm glad that you noted that there's a lactation room in this building. But could we get an inventory on what accommodations, physical accommodations we have made, if any, in other buildings? And think through that. As policymakers, I think it is incumbent on us to make sure that we're adhering to this in a real way and accommodating those that are, have just had a baby or pregnant or whatever that is. So if there are lactation rooms in other places, the other thing that occurs to me when we talk about this kind of thing is, a number of years ago, we passed a resolution that came forward from the Commission on Women and Girls about period products. And so we installed dispensers and provided products for free in county buildings. I'd love to get an update on that to make sure that actually happened. We know it happened here in this building, but let's get an inventory of that. And there's also been a recommendation that we do that in the stadiums. And so I want to just keep that in back of mind. I think we all agreed to that. We said it was a great idea. I don't know where that went. And so get a cost associated with that, too, if it has not happened, so that we know what we're talking about. But I really think it's important that while we pass these resolutions, we honor the spirit of the resolutions and then follow up to make sure that our facilities are accommodating those that, again, are pregnant or just had a child or, you know, menstruating individuals, and make sure we're honest about what we're doing here. So I would appreciate a report whenever, you know, nothing urgent, but I think that might be helpful.
We can certainly get your report on all of that.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Follow-up staff report on it.
Okay. If there's nothing else, I'm going to move that we approve of consent agenda items two through eight.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer DuM?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
I do have one thing. We're not going to let you tiptoe out of here.
Oh, no.
You have a birthday today.
It's time for the executive session.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
At a certain age, you just don't celebrate. I'm just kidding. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22-G4, to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer DuM?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Yes, thank you.[1599.62]